I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice crow.
Okay, good evening everyone, welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 City of Wyndham Council Meeting. This evening, we have the consent agenda before the council, which includes the minutes of the council meeting of July 5th, utility commission June 28th, EDA meeting on July 10th, and the library board July 11th. Also included are license and permits as follows, amplification permits, Wyndham Area Chamber, July 25th, Wyndham Area Chamber, August 1st, which is the Night to Unite, and the exempt gambling permit, Pheasants Forever, September 9th. Also included are the regular bills the council wished to take action.
I'll move to accept the regular agenda, bills and stuff?
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Department heads. Welcome, Jason.
Jason Skor, electric superintendent. Just thought I'd come tonight, update the council on the multiple projects we've got going and the project that's going to, that's out for bid, currently out for bid. I'll start with Truck Shed. Truck Shed, footings, foundations are all in. We are waiting for a flammable waste trap and then we will start seeing floor poured and should August 14th start seeing walls go up. Projects on, ahead of contracted schedule, contracted schedule is December 31st. Contractor is expecting to be done October 31st. So, moving right along, doesn't foresee any major obstacles, so. If anybody has any questions on that project, I'll go on to the next one. Other project in progress is transmission line project. Poles were dropped off, July 4th week, in most locations, just the standard round poles that you see. They worked on framing most of last week and towards the end of the week, they started setting poles along the township road. They set some today out, heading north on 60 in the MinDOT ditch, right away there, headed out towards the Welcome to Wyndham sign. And they also have some pole set in, in the well field, up by the rec center. So they're cruising right along there. One delay so far is laminated poles, the big square oblong rectangular ones you'll see every once in a while. They are still being treated, I guess, and Albert Lee is where their treating facility is. Still hoping to see those this month, hopefully, so. Now, other than that, one other setback is they ran into a fiber line that was missed marked during original staking. They no longer have room for the massive steel pole structure that's gonna sit on the corner 16th and First Ave, down there by, I think, United Prairie Bank, kind of on the corner there where it turns and goes down truck route. So, meeting with fiber company to see if we can move the line one way or the other, so.
Was curious, was that Wyndham's fiber line?
No. Unfortunately, it isn't gonna be that easy, so. If it was, we could probably just move it ourselves in a timely fashion, but. So yeah, no, that project's doing pretty well. We've had a few outages scheduled, short 20-minute outages, just to move some wires around, but, and we've been able to limit the inconvenience to any customers, so.
Okay, any questions for Jason on any projects?
And then, the final project that's out for bid is the generation project. We had a pre-bid meeting this afternoon, or this morning, at 10:00 AM. We had very good attendance, we had four generals and a handful of subs there, so there's been very good interest, so hopefully we'll see some competitive bidding.
And Jason, when is the bid date on that?
Bid opening will be, we moved it back from the original opening of August 2nd, moved it back by request to the 9th. So, right now, we're gonna open the 9th and we moved our commission meeting to the 15th, the morning before the council meeting. So hopefully we'll be awarding on the 15th to a successful bidder, so.
Okay, very well. Good update, appreciate it. Thanks for chairing the employee appreciation event, too. I hear you golf pretty well, but not, oh, nice. Alright, thanks Jason.
Yep.
Any other department heads tonight? Okay, Steve, as long as I mention that, who won that golf tournament? Oh, you don't know? Okay. Alright.
I'm pretty sure Steve was maybe on that winning team.
Thank you Jenny, and you weren't on Steve's team, right?
I was not, but I will say that I was the only one on the putting challenge that made a putt, so I did have a little bit of success.
Very well, I can't wait till council comments. Okay, with no more department heads, we have a donation of the Veterans Memorial from the Wyndham Area Foundation. There's a resolution, I believe, that's included in your packet. Any discussion on that prior to Marv?
Well, I'm just saying your council packet is a letter from the Wyndham Area Foundation, offering the donation of the Veterans Memorial in Lowman Park to the city of Wyndham. And while the memorial is complete, there is landscaping to be done in the fall that will remain the financial responsibility of the Wyndham Foundation. The foundation letter also goes on to state that we appreciate the generous donations from Wyndham Area residents and others that have contributed their time and money to the project. So the request tonight would be for the city council to accept the donation of the Veterans Memorial valued at approximately $90,000.
Okay, any questions on that? So we're not gonna do the resolution until?
We'll do the resolution tonight.
Oh, that will be tonight? Okay, as part of the, yes, okay. Scott?
Just wanted to see how great it does look and wanna thank everybody that's been part of it and just for doing something for Wyndham, thank you very much. For anybody that's been, had their hands on that, it looks really beautiful there.
And once again, my appreciation to Marv for getting this started, very much appreciated having a council member taking a lead on that, to help the foundation, you know, make that generous donation, so. With that, we will go on to the resolution.
I would introduce the resolution authorizing to accept the donation of the new Veterans Memorial from the Wyndham Area Foundation to the city of Wyndham.
I would second that.
The resolution of acceptance by Marv and second by Jenny. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Steve, a roll call please.
Grunig.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
That resolution carries in a very energetic way. Jenny?
I just wanted to make one comment that I remember coming to the first Park and Rec meeting where Marv came and he had the whole, you know, what you see down at Lowman Park, he had that all on display. He had made a mini model and brought that to our meeting and it was very impressive how, you know, from that model, he made and brought to see this. This is just incredible, thank you.
Is the mini model by Marv going to be stored at city hall?
I don't believe there's a storage area for the main model.
Thanks again, Marv. Okay, next, we have, actually, liquor fundraiser proposal. John?
John Nelson, liquor store manager. So, a few times during the year, the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association does our community involvement activities. Coming up, August 1st to September 11th is the 5th Annual MMBA Fire Department Fundraiser. So in an effort to help cities promote the community value of their municipal liquor store operations, the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association, in partnership with Molson Coors, is coordinating the 5th Annual Fundraiser benefiting local fire departments. This event will run from August 1st to September 11th. This is an effort to help raise additional money for local fire departments as many are running on very tight budgets. All funds raised here in Wyndham will go directly to the Wyndham Fire Department upon city council action. This year, we are looking at doing two different fundraisers for the Wyndham Fire Department. The first option has already been set in motion and that gambling permit was approved by the city council last meeting. The second option is what I'm looking for permission from the council to proceed with. So the first item that we are doing is we will be doing a pallet raffle. So we'll be raffling off a pallet of Coors Banquet or Coors Light, as they are the main sponsor of the promotion this month. Fire department has met and has set a limit of 1,000 tickets at $10 tickets apiece, so we will be selling those tickets in store throughout the promotion. We'll have a pallet on display and some firefighters will go sell tickets individually as well. All proceeds from that will benefit the Wyndham Fire Department Relief Association as we'll be using their gambling license to complete that pallet raffle. The second that I'm looking at doing this year is a donation based on a portion of sales of both Coors Banquet and Coors Light during the fundraiser event. The funds for the fire department through the sales will be broke down as the following. So for every 24-pack package that we sell during that time period, we would donate a dollar to the fire department, 75 cents for every 15 or 18-pack, 50 cents for every nine-pack or 12-pack, and 25 cents for every six-pack. Total proceeds from this fundraiser would be transferred to the fire department general fund to be used to offset equipment purchases such as the city's match of the USDA grants received for the wildland truck, six-wheeler or boat. The fiscal impact of this is very minimal, as we'll do this in lieu of advertising a sale on these products, we'll promote the transfer of funds to the general fund. Based on our 2022 sales of these items, that total transfer would have been 154.50. Hopefully, we can increase that based on this promotion this year, so.
Any questions for John? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the fundraiser proposal as described.
I'll make the motion for the fundraiser, for the liquor store fundraiser.
And I'll second.
Motion by Scott? Actually, yeah, motion by Scott, second by Jenny. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. What else you got going on, John?
Not much. That, we will, I will total sales after the end of the period and then we will come, I will come to the city council and present the amount and then hopefully we can approve a transfer at that time, so. Other than that, we're just wrapping up, we're in the final week of bid openings for the liquor store expansion. So that bid closes, we'll be doing the opening here at city hall on the 25th at 2:00 PM. From there, hopefully TSP will have their recommendation to the city council by the council packet on the 28th, and we'll be here presenting that here on August 1st.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next, Night to Unite proclamation. And as Jenny has requested, the Night to Unite that we will start later in the evening, would you be willing to read the proclamation? I'm sorry. No.
Yes, do you want me to introduce the resolution first or read it first?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to introduce the resolution for Wyndham's Night to Unite proclamation.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Thank you, Scott.
Wyndham's Night to Unite proclamation, whereas the Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, AAA and local law enforcement agencies are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug and violence awareness program entitled Night to Unite on August 1st, 2023. And whereas the Night to Unite is designed to get to know one another in the city of Wyndham, build neighborhood involvement and bringing police and community together, and to bring an awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts. And whereas Night to Unite provides opportunity to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and individual, or neighborhoods in Wyndham by working together to fight crime and victimization and increase public safety for all citizens. And whereas the Department of Corrections, Cottonwood County Probation, the Southwest Crisis Center play a vital role in assisting the Cottonwood County sheriffs and the Wyndham Police Department through joint crime, drug and violence prevention efforts in Wyndham and supporting the Night to Unite 2023 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens in Wyndham be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact of their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs and violence in Wyndham. And whereas local, or whereas law enforcement, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness and cooperation are important themes of Night to Unite program. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the city of Wyndham, or by the council, city council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 is designated as Night to Unite in Wyndham, Minnesota. And the citizens of Wyndham are encouraged to support and participate in Wyndham 17th Annual Night to Unite, adopted by the council this 18th day of July, 2023.
Thank you Jenny. Any discussion on the proclamation introduction? Hearing none? Roll call.
Benson.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Thank you and thank you for all the work that those departments that'll be recognized have done for our community. Next item, item number six is tax forfeited property. That's in a resolution form that was in your packet. The listing, we have a listing there that's in front of you, of three different properties. And just a comment that I have prior to this resolution is, I drove by the two residents and the one on River Road I could not find, and so I would like Steve to just give an explanation on that one.
Okay, that's why I included map in the packet. There's a very, very small parcel, skinny parcel over by the apartments, Perkins Creek Apartments, over by the school. I don't know way back when if there was some kind of easement or some other lot issue back there, but when that got built and conveyed to the property owners, there's a little tiny strip, probably, well, it's not very wide, just a few, like less than 20 feet wide and probably about 50 feet long, that's basically an island out in the middle of those properties and no man's land. So the Cottonwood County auditors discovered it, nobody's paying taxes on that parcel and so they're offering it to the adjacent landowners, you know, for inclusion in their parcel, but it's a cleanup exercise there, so there's no access or anything else to it, so.
Thank you Steve. The council, Marv?
There's no easements on it or anything either?
No, not the word of no.
Council have any questions on any of these properties? Okay.
I will add that what we do is when we get these, we bring them up at department head, we look at them, see if there's any public need for those and we didn't have anything that we could come up with on needing those, so these will just go to the county and then we'll go through their sale process.
Okay, anything further? Okay, the resolution as printed would be justified in my opinion, let's council think.
I would introduce the resolution approving the sale of the tax forfeited parcels at public auction.
Second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Steve, I'll ask for a roll call.
Nelson. Grunig.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Personnel recommendation. Scott's on his way up here with the recommendation, we've got a hire and I'm very happy to listen to the chief for a quick introduction.
Scott Peterson, police chief, in your packet you have a memo from me requesting that Hunter Braun be hired as a police officer with the city of Wyndham. He has a degree from Alexandria Tech in law enforcement and he has previous experience with the city of Cleveland, the Minnesota State Patrol. We think he's gonna be a fine addition. He's completed all his employment tests and we would ask your approval.
Thank you Scott. Jim, your mic is on, were you gonna make a motion to approve that?
Yes, I do.
I'll second it.
Thank you Jim for that quick motion and Scott for your second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That was good Scott and good luck, we need a couple more.
Thank you, one down, two to go.
Alright, sounds good. Mayor appointments to the Park and Rec Commission? Mitchell's actually here tonight, so this is his formal introduction, he's, boy, my mic is echoing. Maybe it's because my hands are, thank you Steve.
Too much wear.
I'll take that as a compliment. So, Mitchell, I'm gonna ask you to pronounce your last name.
Chimaluski.
Okay. Chimaluski. Mitchell has actually filled out the information online, which I quite honestly did not know it was there, that we had an application process for council positions, so.
Board and commissions.
Board and commissions. Yeah, sorry. But that was the first one I've seen that utilized that form. And so I hope our residents take advantage of that and just an opportunity to announce it that for our boards and commissions, there is a form on our city website that you can fill out and does, do as Mitchell did, volunteer your efforts and your strong suits to help the city of Wyndham. We're getting close to, with this, we'll be filling all of our positions, I believe we have a telecom left yet with, for one. So, with that, I would entertain someone to approve that appointment to the Park and Rec Commission.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny, was the second by Jim? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you and welcome to the Park and Rec Commission. Thank you. Next, new business. Seeing none, old business. We're on a roll folks, we might get done under a half hour? If Jenny doesn't speak too much tonight. So Jenny, you're on first for council comments.
Okay, we just attended last Friday the city appreciation event and that I thought was very nice and we have just a lot of great city employees and I had mentioned that that night to the ones that attended, but to those that didn't attend and to those people in the public. We have some very committed, dedicated city employees here in the city of Wyndham, so I just wanna appreciate all of them, the ones that were at the event and the ones that couldn't attend, but just so you all hear that, we really do have good staff in the city of Wyndham and we thank them for their service. And then, just to touch on the Night to Unite that's coming up August 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 on the Courthouse Square, because we have, our city of Wyndham PD will be down there, the sheriff's department will be down there, state patrol, we'll have a DNR officer down there, our Wyndham Fire Department will be down there, the ambulance will be down there, we'll have a school bus down there. And really, the Night is about bringing our community together and I know people always talk about, you know, feel that small town feeling in Wyndham and how you like to feel that you live in a small town and you're connected. This is the way to get connected. If you've just moved here or if you've been here a long time, you need to come down and interact, interact in the community, get to know your neighbors, get to know our helping professionals and just kinda have a good time. We're gonna have a lot of door prizes down there, the chamber has their cookout hamburgers and they also have their ice cream social and I know it's school staff that are out there handing out that ice cream so the kids can start to see their teachers and school staff again or get on that school bus and remember what that's like. There's just a lot of fun things, so I really encourage people in Wyndham to come down and just get to know each other and hang out that night.
Thank you Jenny, great report. Scott?
No.
Thank you. Jim?
I guess we're gonna lose our dog then, huh Scott? Will he be available? That's good to know.
Marv?
Well, I just can't thank everybody enough for participating in the effort to get the Veterans Memorial project built, especially to the Wyndham Area Foundation and the Cottonwood County citizen. Without them, it would have been really, really difficult, so thanks to those two.
Thank you Marv. Go ahead Dennis. Steve?
I believe council member Quaid touched on it earlier, but thank you to council member Grunig for all his work in spearheading that Veterans Memorial. Marv is very good about giving credit to others, but he also deserves a round of applause for his work on that, so I think the community owes that to Marv, so maybe we could lead it. And the benefit was getting to embarrassment at council meetings, so I'll call that good.
Thank you Steve, great comments. One thing I have, once again, just reiterating Jenny, is for the public is August 1st, Night to Unite, and also after that, we have a city council meeting at 7:30. That can be a little bit longer council meeting, of course, it'll go past 7:30, I can tell you that. So, and also, I just wanted to make mention, I had received a call and I said I'd mention this tonight, that it appears that the horse group is doing pretty good and also our city employees. it appears that the horse group is doing pretty good, and also our city employees down at the arena, getting these horse shows going this year, I understand they had good discussion, good feedback from, with the Park and Rec Commission, had some good discussion there, they even had, and I wanted to mention just briefly, is they had one that they turned down, it did not fit between the timeframe of Memorial Day and Labor Day, and so that was a concession that I had to make, Tim had called them, and that was beyond the time specified, but we do appreciate them bringing any events, you know, to the interest of Tim, and we appreciate what our whole group, and especially our staff, I heard good comments about the things that our staff does in preparation of these shows, and livestock shows, and there was a, a list of other things, you know, having to do with, you know, that country atmosphere that we're all surrounded by, so I think, just kudos out to the, to the groups and to our staff for working with all the departments, so with that, go ahead.
I just wanna say that I know, when we had that meeting at Park and Rec, that they mentioned the footings were really good this year, and the horse show people have really appreciated that we've got really good footings for the horse shows, and so I think it sounds like that's something that's helping to bring people back too, because they're doing such a good job at that, so very good.
Yep, very good, and we hope to, you know, continue and get more shows next year, and we still got a little time yet for a couple shows, I think, how many do we have coming up, Tim?
One this weekend, and one at the end of August, we have two, as well as some other smaller events.
Okay, I just asked him, one this weekend, and one the end of August, and then some miscellaneous events in between, so we're a good start, I think, at this time, and we'll look forward to a report from the whole year after the season's done, so with that, I have nothing further, we're adjourned by unanimous consent at 7:03.